So you're on mute.
Okay, we'll start now.
All right, welcome. I'd like to call the September 10th, 2020, City Council Workshop to Order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be moderating today's meeting. First, I'd like to call on the city clerk for the roll call.
Okay, Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover. Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
You're on mute.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No changes to the workshop agenda, Mayor.
All right, motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Glover. Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business. Item number one, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This first item, we wanted to update the council on the development of the city's adventure park. And with that, I will turn it over to Recreation and Parks Director Gary Fenton for the presentation. I think Gary's getting ready to share his screen.
Everybody see that all right?
No.
No. You can see nothing?
Right, have you hit share screen at the bottom?
Yeah, I hit share screen, I did, and then I picked the one that you're supposed to be seeing. We just went through this with Rob. Oh, crip. It came up exactly right on my two computers, so I'm not sure what this is about. I'll end the show and try to start again.
Okay. Okay, it's coming. There you go, Gary.
Okay.
Can you put it on slideshow?
Yeah, let me, in the beginning. Are you seeing it now? The big slide?
Can you go to, Rob, can you help with this so that we just see the slide and not the next slide?
Gary, it's display settings at the top, and then switch, display settings.
I see it. And then swap?
Yep.
There you go. You're on, Gary.
Okay. They switched on my screen, but that's all right. We'll deal with that. Mayor Connolly and members of council, good evening. Next month, council will be considering the name for the city's new adventure park that will be on the north bank of the Tar River on Greenville's east side. But first, the Recreation and Park Commission will host a public hearing at their September 23rd zoo meeting and follow up with a recommendation to council regarding their preferred name. The process we used for generating the potential names resulted in the two most popular being Emerald Riverside Park and Wildwood Park. The commissioners may choose to recommend one of these two names or come up with a different recommendation. And then council, after hosting your own public hearing on October the 8th, will be free to approve that recommendation or select a different name. As you know, we've acquired over 160 riverside acres north of the Tar River immediately east of northeast Greenville Boulevard. To expand on that, we've applied for a part of Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant for about the same size track immediately west of the acquired property on the west side of northeast Greenville Boulevard. We use funds in acquiring the east side track as the match for this grant application for the west side track. Unfortunately, we don't know whether yet this acquisition will receive part of funding, but that announcement is forthcoming. We expect it in the next eight to 10 days. If by chance we're not awarded the grant, we'll continue to seek a means of acquiring the property because the potential benefits of the adventure park of this magnitude benefits our community and our residents and visitors and Greenville's economic health will be abundant and long lasting. And if this grant proposal isn't funded, the acquisition cost for the east side property that we invested in can still be used as a match for a grant next year. So we would apply again if we did not get the funding this year. Both the east side and the west side properties contain lakes. And the one on the east property includes a stream connection to the Tar River. And the other on the west property has extensive shoreline with lots of peninsulas and also has an island. Adventure parks also incorporate and benefit from other natural aspects such as rivers and streams, also forests, bogs, and meadows, and spectacular views. And this piece of land, these pieces of land have all of that. Park development will of course initially come in phases, with the first phase encompassing an extension of the primitive trail at River Park North to allow eventual connection to the trails at the adventure park situated just to the east of River Park North. That is Phase 1A, and the extension of the River Park North Trail has already been completed. Phase 1B involves the development of east side property that include a trail, a gravel parking lot, an accessible sidewalk, and a small sandy beach. We expect construction to begin by the end of November. Phase 2 includes installation of a floating dock with three boat slips and a canoe kayak launch. It also includes construction of three camping platforms on the north side of the lake on the east side of the highway. Construction is anticipated to start by year's end. And finally, Phase 3 includes the acquisition of the west side property, which is a date to be determined, and a trail boardwalk for connecting the east side trail to the river and eventually connecting all adventure park trails in general to those at River Park North. This slide depicts what was until recently the extent of the primitive trail at River Park North, at a mile and a quarter. Here in red, you see the additional new trail, another mile and a quarter extension, which goes all the way to River Park's northeastern point, most eastern point, and that's indicated by the star on this map. The addition has made it possible for park visitors to walk or bike from the nature center all the way to the park's eastern end, which is a journey of about two and a half miles now. The efforts within Phase 1A provided trails like these and opportunities for hiking and off-road biking. Here we have the same map with Phase 1B improvements, which will be on the eastern property added in, including the beach, the parking lot, sidewalks, and a 1.4 mile trail around the lake. We are currently in the design phase for these improvements. And those improvements are included on this site plan that will ultimately allow opening the eastern acreage to the public. And this plan includes an access gate and gravel parking lot, the camping platforms and floating boat dock mentioned earlier, as well as the sandy beach area. On this map, the Phase 2 improvements have been added, including the floating docks and the camping platforms. Here, Phase 3 improvements are added, including the boardwalk connections from River Park North to the adventure park, and a trail extension, and on the eastern property, boardwalk connections to the Tar River as illustrated in this close-up of that connection. And here's an example of the Phase 3 boardwalks. And finally, Phases 1, 2, 3 altogether on the map, the whole picture of the initial adventure park development, which will ultimately result in over five miles of primitive trails along the lakes and the river. Funding for the first three phases of the project will come from the following sources: the general fund appropriations, grants for which the city has already applied, and local donations. General fund dollars include prior year appropriations that are currently being held in the Recreation and Parks Capital Fund and new funding included in the FY '21 council-approved budget to finance several recreation and parks capital improvements. The city has applied for a couple of grants which you mentioned, which we will be hearing from in the near future. Those grants include, again, the part-of-grant for up to $500,000 for assisting in the acquisition of the west side property, and a North Carolina Trails grant that will fund construction of the floating dock and camping platforms on the east side property. Finally, staff is and will be actively pursuing local donations to assist in the development of the park. As you are aware, the city received a sizable donation that assisted in the acquisition of the east side property, and we're hoping to pursue other various donor opportunities. A park of this magnitude and this complexity and impact represents an investment that's going to require lots of sources of funding beyond those which the city can provide. And we will always be on the lookout for other grants and gifts, gifts from businesses, individuals, and families and nonprofits, which may come in the form of a sponsorship of a particular amenity or a general contribution to development of the park, a land donation, a naming rights payment, a bequest, or even a private sector partner that might actually build and operate some recreational aspect of the park. Based on the amount of recurring funding appropriated to the project and current financing rates, staff believes that the city could finance approximately $1.25 million in improvements and development to the adventure park. So in summary, this slide provides a breakdown of the timing and estimated cost of each development phase. Design of Phase 1 and 2 is near completion, and we project to move forward with Phase 1 construction in the next month and a half. Phase 1 has a total estimated cost of approximately $200,000 and is projected to be completed in late winter or early spring of 2021. Phase 2, which includes the floating dock, water access, and camping platforms, is projected to begin construction in December and is projected to cost approximately $110,000. We are expecting Phase 2 to also be completed by spring of 2021. With concerns to Phase 3, staff plan to begin the phase for design and bring it back to council for approval before the end of this calendar year. Our goal would be to complete design in the spring of 2021 and to put it out for construction in the summer, fall of next year. Although staff has projected the amount of available funding for this phase, efforts will be made to design Phase 3 in the most cost-effective way possible so as to maximize the park amenities that can be funded. There are multitude of future development opportunities for this park, some of which may attract a corporate sponsor. Some of those possibilities include enclosed and open shelters, an elevated canopy walk and observation tower, a low and high elements ropes course, bunk houses and tree houses, fishing piers, a cable wakeboarding facility, and other water-related amenities that would help us get the most benefit from the river, lakes, and streams that are associated with the adventure park. This was a recommendation that came out of the Tar River Legacy Plan. We intend to begin the process of developing a park development plan to assure the suitability of each proposed amenity and its appropriate placement, and to begin seeking potential partners for various components of the park. As mentioned, the development of many of these amenities will require partnerships, just like the donor who partnered with us in the acquisition of the east side acreage that we now own. We also hope to seek a 2021 Development Grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund as this program recently received bipartisan support and now makes its funding permanent, guaranteeing $900 million a year in perpetuity, a program paid for by royalty payments from the offshore oil and gas drilling in federal waters. Atlanta Water provides funding support for the national parks and also for acquisition and development grants to state and local governments for up to $500,000 for development of high-quality public outdoor recreation and conservation areas. And this adventure park will be all of that. As I mentioned earlier, current capital funding, whoops, I'm sorry. Current capital funding allows us to initiate improvements to the east side acreage that should enable us to begin opening the property for visitation and exploration by area citizens in early spring, and we're quite excited about that. And we thank you for your support of this initiative. If there are any questions, we'll try to answer them for you.
All right, thank you, Gary. I appreciate it. Any questions for Gary or anybody on the staff?
Gary, I have a question. You mentioned potential partnerships that we would explore with the private sector, potentially to utilize the lake and river more frequently and to get our best bang for the buck there.
Right.
The first lake that comes to mind for me is Jordan Lake, where there's a service offered where you can store your boat on a trailer on their facility, and they will launch the boat for you and put it on the stage dock at the lake. I think we would all be extremely surprised at the amount of use that a service such as that would receive in the city. If you go out on a spring day to Port Terminal, when the weather's warming up and it's not necessarily beach season yet, you'd be really hard pressed to find a parking spot, let alone enough time to launch your boat and enjoy it for the day. Have we explored any options like that?
We have not yet, but we certainly are open to that. That sounds like a very viable and interesting proposal. Obviously, between these two pieces of land, we have about 370 acres, maybe about 30, 40% of that is water. But we do have quite a bit of space in this land, and we want that use. I know I can remember your video, Councilmember Bell, that when you went up the creek into this open land, open water, and that wasn't a tiny little kayak that you took up there. There are those opportunities, and that particular lake, because it's attached to the river, really opens up opportunities for boating. And the other lake is bigger, but it's not connected to the Tar. So we'll certainly consider that.
Okay, yeah, I'd really like to see us explore that if it seems like the council's interested in it. You know, I think there would be a lot of use out of it. I think it's a great way for us to make some money off of it, maybe not the city, but someone in the private sector and providing an awesome service to the citizens. So it's definitely something I'd like for us to take the look at.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Gary? All right, well, thank you very much, Gary. Appreciate everything you're doing. Looking forward to seeing this thing come to fruition. And it's time to see all the neat things that'll be available to the community starting in April.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Manager, number two.
Thank you, Mayor. We also wanted to take a little time, council time, and talk about some new initiatives from the Greenville Police Department, some exciting community policing opportunities that the department has been exploring. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Holtzman.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. Pleased to give you an update on some initiatives that we've been working on here at the police department. I would couch them under the idea of addressing national issues at the local level. Also going to touch on some community outreach and introduce you to a mediation coordinator here in town. So with all that said, we'll get to this. The first initiative is really a big one for us. This is addressing the response to mental health and persons in crisis. Usually it's a suicide call, attempted suicide call, or a mental health-related call. In the past, we've been doing those by ourselves. We've had the availability of Mobile Crisis, but we really renewed our partnership with Mobile Crisis. And we're now bringing them out with us. So it's an automatic phone call. When we get that call for a person in crisis at home, our officers are trained in the International Program of Crisis Intervention Training. However, it's a cursory course. We're not the experts in it, and there are pros in the community that we can use. So we really wanted to renew our partnership with them. Just in the last month, we had a meeting yesterday. They've been out 17 times with us for different calls. And it's really going to be a real flagship program for us. What we're working toward is that third bullet point, fourth bullet point called co-response model. So this will be a first of its kind in the east that we're aware of. And this is where they would actually respond with us, not in a vehicle with us. They'll have their own car. They'll come along immediately with us to the scene and then relieve the officers while they're there. So if the person wants to go voluntarily to the hospital, they'll do that transport. If they don't need transport at all, then they can begin to work with them immediately at their home and free our officers back up. So this one I'm really excited about. Their hotline there is at the bottom, and I would share with the community. You do not need to wait for law enforcement to initiate this. This is a community-based service that's available. It's run underneath Trillium and Integrated Family Services, and it's called Mobile Crisis. That hotline there is for you, the community, to call as well. Second initiative, we really wanted to address how do we work better and educate the students that are living off campus? We have an enormous off-campus student housing, and how do we better engage them? So the logo on the side was put together by ECU, not by us, but it really gets the attention of college kids. And addressing that this year was really around the idea of COVID. We had started this idea of Responsible Behavior Initiative. It's really a partnership with ECU PD. So this is Chief Barnwell's initiative, and we're partnering with him on it. What it means is when we get a call for a party off-campus, or when COVID, if we get a call for a large gathering off-campus of students, then that call gets immediately transferred to ECU Police Department, then they respond. We can back them up if we need to, but in most cases, they've been able to handle these calls. They're engaging the students. They have a three-step process listed down below where they're using education and campus citations that they need to in order to get the students' attention. It's been a very effective program for them, and really a partnership that I see us continuing even well after COVID. The third one is a tough one first to address, and this one we were looking at is juvenile delinquency and how do we better engage as a police department with juvenile justice and the district attorney's office to reduce our charges of juveniles and get them really into the proper channels within the community. Divert where we can divert, and if we need to take the court, then still just engage in the DA's office early in that our goal is to reduce the amount of kids that are going into our court system and maximize the amount of different diversion programs that are out there. The last bullet point talks about truancy, and the community may not know that police department get a lot of phone calls, the sheriff's department does as well, for kids that don't go to school. And so they call the police and ask for help. Well, if that's, there's not an actual crisis going on in the home. In other words, if there's not a safety issue, that really needs to be diverted back to the proper place. So I've spoken with the school board about it, Mobile Crisis, even Department of Juvenile Justice. Those are all resources first that can be used. And again, we encourage the community. If you have a child that you're having trouble with, you're struggling. I'm a parent. Nobody's immune from this. You can call directly to the school. You can talk again to Mobile Crisis, and they can help you through that. The next one I get to introduce, Chassie Lawrence. She's on the call here with us. I'll ask her to unmute and talk a little bit about the Community Mediation Center. My experience of this in the past has been very successful. And this is a resource a lot of communities have, and it gets underutilized. The mediation center is used a lot by the courts here. I really wanted to see how we can engage that to address some repeat calls for service in our community, where maybe neighbors are having issues with one another, and they really don't know who to turn to, so oftentimes they'll call the police. Well, really, the proper place really might be the mediation center to begin to work some of those issues out. So if Chassie Lawrence is on the call here, she's a coordinator with our local Mediation Center of Eastern Carolina. If you want to take a minute and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you. We are the Mediation Center of Eastern Carolina. We are in the business of settling disputes within the community. And as our mission statement says, we are developing the capacity to resolve conflicts in a peaceful manner. So one of the things that we utilize is our community mediation program. And that is an opportunity for, like you said, people in the community who have disputes to have it settled. And as the chief, the police chief was just saying, a lot of the calls that they're receiving are not appropriate for law enforcement, but they're welcome to call us here to settle those disputes. Also, we have other services and organizational trainings for our community and organizations as well. It is a voluntary process, so it's, we really want people to be invested into the agreement that they agree upon on completion of the property.
Well, any questions for Chassie while we have her? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think it's going to be a good partnership. It'll be one of those where I think in the future we'll realize how do we get along without you?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
I'll finish up with just a couple of slides. This is one that the manager and I have been talking a lot about. How do we continue to do community outreach in a time of COVID? We're under a lot of restrictions. So we really had to go small but go big at the same time. We started off with really an indoor event up in the top corner. This is Operation Sunshine. We did just about a month or so ago over on Chestnut Street. This is an after-school program. It's a nonprofit, a great service to the community. And so we got to do a makeover over there. That's Steve from Fast Sign actually installing some new signage on the windows and doors. We did a full makeover inside of that. It was a nice way to get back out and engage the community and get our hands dirty at the same time. South Zone Backpack Giveaway. This was an introduction for one of our new cops and barbers participants, DMT Cuts. And that's Captain Stanton down there in the bottom right corner. So I'm over on the left at the blue tent. And this is Captain Stanton here. So they did a quick giveaway here right before school, some backpacks, and just introduced the community to the barber shop that's there. Down, the two gentlemen standing here in the bottom, this is Officer Corey Smith and Officer Lockman. They're off our Center City unit, and they've popped up a tent there in the Umbrella Market just to, again, get their face out there. People are coming downtown. We want to take the opportunity and introduce ourselves so they know what the face of public safety looks like downtown. The shop with the cop is over on the bottom right, and that's going to be Officer Vic Slaughter. This is a great partnership. I believe this was with Rotary. I hope I get that right. Yes, so they sponsor it and allow us an opportunity to go out, shop with some kids, engage with them. This is a lot of fun. I've done this the last several years. I didn't get to go this year, but it is a fantastic event. The garden picture is a partnership between our PAL and the Love a Sea Turtle program. So they did two programs just in last month. One was a bike giveaway where we donated some bikes. The Love a Sea Turtle group repaired them, and then we did a bike giveaway. This down at the bottom is located over at our PAL Center, at the Epps Recreation Center. And they redid the entire park there, built these raised boxes, and planted some vegetables over there. So that's a fantastic program. And I'd like to say we're done there, but we're not. Happening right now while we're talking, over at our West Zone substation, is Lemonade on the Porch. This is a brand-new event, just something, again, we're trying to do something small but still have a meaningful impact in the community. How do we keep the event small and still have a good conversation? We have a great front porch over there. We put some rocking chairs on the front porch. We have some great lemonade and food out there. This event's going on right now, and that's running until, I think, about 5:00 o'clock this evening. And then later on this evening, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Captain Tyndall, who runs the east side substation, he's going to be engaging in a conversation with the Black Student Union and their virtual town hall, covering the tough issues of the dialogue with the police there and safe interactions. What do you do when you encounter police? Again, we remind council that we have some videos that are available for safe interactions with law enforcement. But we have handouts that we give out. A lot of times, our little care cards that we give out through our barber shop program. It's just an ongoing education and way to interact with the community. And lastly, what's coming up? We have a brand-new phase to our cops and barbers program. This is a cops and barbers wrap session. So we're borrowing the best of a program up in Cary and had a speaker come down in January, right before COVID hit. We got all of our barbers together. We got everybody excited about the idea of having some meaningful Saturday morning conversations. And we've waited long enough. We're going to go ahead and start it off. We'll keep the event small. it off. We'll keep the event small, but it'll be coming up on the 19th, and we're going to start off over at Campus Cuts. And again, just a relaxed conversation between us and the community, engage a crowd that comes over on a Saturday. I think it's going to be a real good addition to the program. And that's it. I'll take questions from council if you have any.
Any questions for the chief?
Just thanks for all the good work. A lot of interesting, a lot of neat approaches there.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much. We appreciate all that you're doing with the community, and we appreciate that new program as well that's been put in place.
Thank you. Mayor, I do want to commend Chief Holtzman as well as the entire Greenville Police Department. They work hard. The community engagement and positive relationships with the community are really important. We have tried to put in place the right program to match with the right community need, and I really appreciate the Police Department's work on many of these efforts, particularly the crisis intervention. That is a place where that is a place where some needed and some help and assistance is greatly beneficial to our department as well as those members of the community who need it. So thanks to the Police Department.
All right.
Okay.
Move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. The final item tonight is regarding some updates to the city's financial policies. As Byron is keying that up, I want to just provide a quick overview. The city manager's office, along with all the departments, have been working to compile a full set of the city's administrative policies and procedures so that we have a comprehensive set. We can put it on the city's website. We can make it available to those who need it, and we've done some work. We've done a lot of work on the personnel policy side, but there are a number of other policies the city has that we're compiling. And so Financial Services Director Byron Hayes will talk about some changes that we're making to the city's financial policies, and you'll note at the end of his presentation that he'll talk about those tonight, and then we will bring those back to the council for your approval at the October meeting. Byron?
All right. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was off mute. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As the city manager said, this is going to be a brief update, I want to emphasize "brief", of the city Greenville financial policy. Our objective in these policies, the goal was to help the city meet the council goal of governing with fiscal transparency and fiscal responsibility. So that's our number one goal with that, to actually help achieve that council goal. Just giving a brief background of our financial policies with the city. We last came to council with financial policy revisions in June of 2016 in preparation for the 2015 GeoBond issuance. Also, the city currently has four council-approved policies that have been written by Financial Services. That's the financial policy, the electronic payments policy, the investment policy, and the identity theft detection and prevention policy. The oldest one of those policies was last brought to council in 2009. The most recent one was brought, I think, on the consent agenda on 2017. These policies are written based on generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP, as well as governmental accounting standards, board standards, which is also known as GASP. And the authority based for these policies is based around the North Carolina General Statute 159. So the idea is to take all four of those policies mentioned before and combine it into one updated financial policy. The objective of that is to reflect our current financial operations. We have some new and updated processes even since 2016, 2017 with the expansion of our financial system units, as well as other software enhancements that exist within that as well. Our other objective is to just make sure that we use more concise language within our policy. The key within that is that the policy needs to focus on the what and the procedures that would accompany this policy, focus more on the how. Just a couple of updates. One of the two main areas that are updated in this policy are related to general fund and health insurance fund fund balance. The original language for the general fund fund balance mentioned that we would strive to maintain at least 14% unassigned fund balance. What we did was revise that to say we will maintain a floor of 14% unassigned fund balance within the general fund. Moving into the health insurance fund, there was no official policy in terms of a reserve or fund balance in that particular fund. What we're proposing is to revise it to have, to maintain a 50% reserve within the health insurance fund. The goals within that is basically to tighten up the language some in the general fund that might allow us for a future goal, not anything policy-wise, but to try and strive for a little bit higher unassigned fund balance within the general fund, something close to the 16% or 18%, as well as to set a benchmark within the health insurance fund so that we can keep a little bit more stable idea behind what our reserve is going to be within that fund. You know, the main idea behind that is to basically make sure that we provide a level of contingency for any unexpected emergencies. Obviously, as you all know, the past few years, we have seen some major events that have happened in the city, hurricanes, ransomware, what's going on with the COVID-19 pandemic, and tightening up these fund balance policies and allowing for, you know, the opportunity to potentially raise within the general fund as well as establishing something in the health fund. We hope will allow us to kind of plan for the future and have the ability to meet whatever needs we have for those unexpected emergencies.
Byron, this is Rick. Is that smiling? Can you go back to that slide? So if I understand, 14% is something on the order of 50 days of cash on hand, right?
Correct.
And 16% would be 60 days cash on hand.
Yeah.
At our current budget, we'd have 60 days' worth of cash.
Correct. Correct. And essentially, what this would allow us to do is we would still be able to keep the general idea of about, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 days or about two months' worth of unassigned fund balance for any large-scale emergency that we have traditionally planned for. Moving to 16% or 18% would really see about what we have been traditionally spending in areas such as hurricane preparedness and hurricane response and recovery. What this would do is allow us to have that cash on hand that if we needed to use that prior to any sort of FEMA reimbursement, that we wouldn't see any significant financial hardships in terms of cash flow within the current year.
Would that have any significant effect on our bond rating?
It would. Increasing this would help, you know, any sort of bond rating whenever we do go to the agencies. It is something that they have mentioned that the higher that our fund balance is, it does look more favorably upon us when we do go out for any sort of bond rating. So yes, increasing that level even in this tightening of the policy would help whenever we do go to the...
Can you remind us what that rating is?
Currently? Our current rating is...
Yesterday or day after tomorrow?
Our current bond rating is AA right now. I believe it's actually AA2 for Moody's and a AA for...
Councilmember Smiley, just to note, we just did go back out to the rating agencies a few months ago, and we had a very favorable rating. They basically maintained the current rating, but also said that we were in a very strong position to be looking at an upgrade in the future, given some of the strong policies that we've implemented. And matter of fact, we have traditionally, we have been able to go above the 14% on an annual basis as far as our fund balance. But like Byron said, this would allow us to be able to control cash flows during some of these unforeseen emergencies.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. So just going into a couple of the other small policy highlights within this, we are looking at, you know, doing some updating of roles and responsibilities related to the vehicle replacement policy, as well as updates to vendor creation and modification, and just some increased accountability for making sure that we adhere to the proper financial operations that are built into this policy. And as a result, our next steps, you all received the draft document that was provided. You know, please review that between now and October before we take the final policy document to council for approval. Any concerns or, you know, corrections that need to be made in there, definitely let me know or let anyone on staff know so that we can be able to make those corrections. In addition to that, we are looking at, in October, providing related procedure manuals and job aids to staff across the city. You know, anytime that you prepare new policies or update any policies, it's important to make sure that the procedures associated with those are also updated and done as well. So that is another aspect of this. And during that, we would look at also conducting additional policy and procedure training for city departments during the October and November period as well. And the goal is to basically be able to take this to council in October for approval with the idea that once we can have all the procedure manuals and training done to also have this fully adopted within the city. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hayes? Thank you for taking on this massive overhaul of the policy. We appreciate you doing that and updating it, and looking forward to seeing it here hopefully in about the very near future. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. Anything else, Madam Manager?
No, sir.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Moved. Second, whatever you need.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I will call in the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover? You're muted. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
That's 6-0 in approval, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now adjourned. We'll see everyone back here at 6:00 PM.